First, I do appreciate all the comments and speaking on behalf of the councilmen who are here, Jeff and Doug, and everyone else who cannot be here for whatever their reasons are, I'm sure they appreciate your input, and everyone's comments are valuable. You know, they really are, and I could say we can't do it all. Life doesn't happen like that. I tried to get rich really quick and it just didn't happen, never did happen, but that's not the point. You're valued, greatly valued. It might not seem like it, but you really are. You really are. Thank you. Now, as the mayor of Richlands, I have ceremonial duties, and I'm going to exercise them this time by the charter. So, in recognition of my duties as the mayor of the town of Richlands, I would like to welcome the Richlands RHS Scholastic Bowl team. They competed in multiple tournaments. It's really, and I'm going to ask the young men in a few minutes, and any of the ladies who are on your team here, so Mr. Hale is the coach. Anyway, I'm going to share with you some delightful people, and they're delightful in every possible way. Not only are they very intelligent and can answer questions really quickly, I've had almost all of them in my class, classes at Richlands High School, and I can share with you that we talk about being raised right, they're raised right. They have manners, they're very respectful, they're young, they keep you young. I know it doesn't look that way, but they really do. It's the heart right here, and I'm so proud of them. And I will say that Mr. Hale, Chris Hale, who is their coach, he calls them his kids, and they really are, but we kind of all share them at Richlands High School, but in this endeavor, he has coached them to victory, but it's not just a victory of numbers and contests and wins, it's a victory of life, and learning life lessons, how to be a good sport, how to win, how to lose. Losing is really hard, but it's something you learn to do because you can't win them all. Into every life, there is a lot of sunshine, and into every life, there is some rain, and we have to live with all of it. Thank you for learning those things and so many more life lessons, gentlemen. Along with them tonight is Mrs. Charity Hurst. She's the assistant principal of Richlands High School, and she is here to support her students from this high school. And I also see Gene Witt, who is a father of one of our students here, Seth Witt, and there's a huge relationship. We are all so much closer than we realize. You see, Gene's mother-in-law is the town historian, Gaynel Thompson, and I use the arc of history when I teach, and we need to hear it right now. We are all so related in things we don't even think about in the day-to-day hassles of our lives, and we all have it, and that is, we're interconnected, and it is the truth. And just away from myself to Gene to Seth, in between there is his grandmother, Seth's grandmother, Gaynel, and loads of people before that. We're all part of this human race. I look into the faces, I look and I see two eyes, I see a nose, I see a mouth. You have two ears? You qualify, you're human. And it's really important to understand these things. We're all on this path together, and we must try to be together. It is difficult when we're upset, and you can hear it in my voice too, but I try my best, but I'm not going to tell you it's the best because it probably isn't, but we all are doing what we think is right. Anyone who thinks that we're not trying to do right, I don't know what to say to them. But right now, let's move on to the higher plane of thinking, and let's welcome these young men. So, I will ask them, as I call their names, to please come up here and stand with me. I would appreciate your company. So, I'll read them in order, and if they're not here, Coach Hale will explain that they couldn't be here. Well, I'll do that. Brenly Bohan, I don't see Brenly.
She's at a tennis match.
Okay, she's at a tennis match. Her mom was a special lady in this community, Amanda Ellis, okay? And she gave her life to her family and college and education. Thank you. I could say something good about every one of these people, I would be here all night, but frankly, this is the heartening part, but I don't want you to think when I say that that your voices do not count. They do count. Jaden Daniels cannot be here. Jaden is my student this year, wonderful lady. Owen Vales, Owen, come up, please, just stand up here. Okay, and this Owen Vales, he's one of the members of the Scholastic Bowl team. And next, we have Gavin Luttrell. Is Gavin here? Gavin cannot be here. Another stellar student, is one of my students this year, and his father teaches at Richlands High School. Okay, we have Lucas Fuller. Luke, Luke is a senior at Richlands High School. He's an athlete, a scholar, and a super fun student, and I think the hairdo speaks for it. The only reason I'm drawing him out, I'm jealous.
Did you write that for him?
Don't you laugh. I'm teasing. Thank you, I'm just teasing. You can laugh. We have not outlawed laughter in Castle County yet. I kiss my students. No laughing, it's outlawed by the board. You can laugh.
Action.
No, no, that's a weird. I'm telling you, remember this, are you ready? A smile is a curve that straightens things out. All right, got it. All right, next Seth Witt. Seth, come on up, friend. Come up. This is Seth Witt. Seth is a senior, he's truly a scholar athlete. Thank you, Seth. I could say nothing but the finest things. Joey Simmons, Joey, come up. Now, I'll read you some accolades as these men come up. The list is rather lengthy, but I'll try to do my best. Thank you, Joey. Joey is from a wonderful family too, and his mother teaches, well, they all are, teaches at Richlands High School. She teaches English, Mrs. Lori Oliver. Joey Simmons is all Southwest District, second team, the East Montgomery Invitational Tournament, first place individual performance. Congratulations to you, Joey. Jontz Cobertson, Jontz, please come up. I'm so proud of Jontz. He's a senior now, and he'll be going away to school, and this just heartens my soul. We have him polar, that's cool. He has class, thank you, and good taste. I was in the business, and I'll just say it, okay? Thank you. Jontz is all Southwest District, second team. Congratulations to you, Jontz. Bryce Taylor, if you go to the Martha Washington, you'll see Bryce's name on the plaque, the Buchanan's and the Taylor's, very famous in our region. Bryce, congratulations to you. Bryce is a scholar athlete, all Southwest District, first team in all regions, second D, 2D, pardon me, 2D, second team, East Montgomery Invitational Tournament, top 10 individual performance, sick, super trashish, I guess that means trashy, it's a fancy way to say trash, which doesn't mean bad stuff, tournament, top 10 individual dormance. All right, Spencer Brown, Spencer, come up, Spencer. Spencer is Spencer Brown, he is the son of Richard and Terry Crawford Brown, and his grandfather is Paul Crawford, he was the mayor. Congratulations to you, Spencer. Let's read some accolades for Spencer. All Southwest District, first team, player of the year, all region 2D, first team, sick, super trashish, let's do that. Tournament second, sick, let's get it right, sick, super trashish, tournament second, place individual performance. Congratulations to you. And all the other students at Richlands High School aren't represented on a team or in any other way, we have the finest kids, and I can say that personally, even on the days when I get aggravated, I back up and I say, whoa, 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 they're human too. They have two eyes, nose, mouth, two ears, they're human. Now, I would like to introduce their coach, Chris Hale. Chris, please come up. This is Chris Hale. Chris describes himself, he's telling me he's a nerd, and that's not a bad thing, but I will tell you, more than that, Chris is an athlete, and he comes from a wonderful family here in Richlands, and I've known him for a while. He's younger than I am, but it doesn't matter, and I'm just delighted that you're here with the students that you've coached and led to the, a lot of knowledge with the higher plane of thinking, Chris, thank you.
Thank you.
And I would like to ask Mrs. Charity Hurst to please come forward for Richlands High School. Mrs. Hurst, would you mind to come forward and be with us? She is our assistant principal. Very proudly have you here tonight, Mrs. Hurst, representing our educational, higher education. Thank you, Mrs. Charity Hurst, thank you, all of you. So, I could go on all night, and we don't have to have any business because this is our business. I have to share 70 stories because this is how I live my life. Several years ago, I went to a graduation before I was employed at Richlands High School, before I started serving, and I came back and I called my sister, who always teaches me life lessons, you know, she's older and the boss, everybody has an older sister, you know how this goes. So, I called her and I said, oh my gosh, I listened to all these things, I've heard it over and over and over, and I was an adult, well into my 50s, and she said, Rod, don't you understand? We have to have these things drilled into us every single day, these platitudes, like shoot for the stars and you're sure, shoot for the moon and you'll be sure to land amongst the stars. How silly is that? But you know what, there's great wisdom in that kind of stuff, and my sister was so right. It might seem silly, but you need to hear it every day. Thank you. The pleasure and honor is mine. Thank you, 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 Coach Hale. Mrs. Hurst, thank you. And if someone will please get a picture of us, and this is knees-worthy, please. I rarely say that. I love you, Kevin, okay? Okay, thank you. And members of council, please come up here, Doug, and with the clerk, and John, okay? You need to be on tour with us, we're proud of these, please. Yes, we need to tell attorneys. Where did you go to school, Bob? Where did you go to law school?
University of Richmond.
Okay, where did you go to law school? Come up, educate people, come on, come on. Okay, it doesn't matter, educated is not, we're all humans.
Can I just add something?
Yes, please do.
Mr. Curry is an awesome teacher, and these are some of the finest kids we have at Richlands High School. They not only excelled on the scholastic team, but they excel academically and also on the field. If you come out and watch a soccer team, a game, match, soccer match, football, they're out there, and they just do an excellent job, I'm so proud of them.
Thank you. Chris, would you like to say something? These are your kids.
He's amazing.
I've been very blessed and privileged to work with these students. Very hard, it's very hard to find students who are motivated, who want to do things of their own volition. So, these are all students who gave me a goal their ninth grade year, they said we want to make it to state, and this year they did. They, it was all their work, we worked very well together, but you know, you can lead a candle to water, but you can't make it drink, and again, I didn't have to do that with them. They were very independent, and I'm very, very proud. I'm also very proud of Mayor Rod Curry, who has actually come to some of our competitions. We've had so much support from the school and from the community, and we're all very appreciative of that. So, it's nice to know that we are supported by all of you folks, knowing that children are our future, and these have very, very great plans for the future.
Thank you, Chris. Thank you. Not to take time, I know we've had a long, long meeting, but it's worth it. Spencer, is there anything you would like to say?
I'm just proud of us, we've worked hard.
Where are you going to go to school? Please tell us.
I'm attending the University of Virginia, basketball.
Great, great. Bryce Taylor, is there anything you would like to say? Tell us what you're looking forward to be when you grow up.
I'm just proud of everything we've accomplished and reasons that we set for ourselves, and it's been a great opportunity for me at Richlands High School for these past four years on the football field and holding the buzzer too, and I'm just, I'm just so grateful I've had the opportunity. And as far as I want to be when I grow up, I guess I'll figure it out in the next few years, but I'm going to be attending a very prestigious Southwest Virginia Community College next year.
Good, thank you, Bryce. Jontz, share something about yourself, your favorite hobby, or whatever you want to say. We're fine.
Well, I guess I enjoy fishing, so that's a hobby of mine. And I just was, I'm very proud of this team, and we've all worked extremely hard, and we deserve everything that we accomplished. I just think it's a great thing for Richlands High School to be extremely competitive and academic teams, it just shows the skill and the greatness of our teachers like you, Mr. Curry, how well you've done teaching us, so.
Okay, Joey Simmons, Joey, would you like to share something, anything you wish?
It was an amazing season, this year, we reached our goals, obviously we wanted to win, but you know, we reached the stage and accomplished it itself, and I'm proud of everyone, especially our seniors, the seniors worked really hard.
You're going to miss them.
Yes, I am, very much so, whether it be four years or one year, and we've very well worked hard.
Joey is a junior in the high school. Okay, Seth Witt.
Only being a team, only being a part of this team for one year has showed me how hard they have worked for the last four. Starting out freshman year, I didn't know how hard it would be to be part of an academic team, but this year it really, especially going all the way to state, it's shown me how hard these three and then this one worked to take a solid major step, but it's just a great thing that they provided to high school, and I'm glad that we have the opportunity for Mr. Curry to be representative equally in front of our community.
Thank you. Lucas Fuller, tell them about your German heritage.
My German heritage?
Yes.
You want me to actually tell them?
Yes, please, yes. We're diverse, we have a ton of diversity here.
All right, well, I guess, my mother is from Germany, she was born in Geeson, where her mother still lives, and my father lives about an hour away, near Frankfurt. My great-grandmother's from Estonia, she was in Germany during the time of World War II, and she escaped a bombing by about an hour, where if she was still in the city that was bombed, I would not be here today.
Your future?
I plan on going to Southwest and then probably Coastal Carolina to study marine biology.
Thank you, Lucas, thank you for sharing your life. Yes, sir, Owen Vales, Owen is a 10th grader, go ahead, Owen.
I'm just glad to be able to have the opportunity to be a part of this team, I look forward to continuing to compete next year. I'm so proud of these seniors, they're so lovely.
You can tell us how you're going to go along.
You use words of affection, it does, well, thank you, thank you. Well, gentlemen, I could take it the rest of the night, but we can't do that unfortunately, we do have business to do, but I would ask that you please shake hands with all the members of council, with the town manager, with the town attorneys. I'll move out of the way so you can do this, please. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations on all your efforts, good luck to you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Good job.
Good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, enjoy your evening, enjoy your evening. Chris, enjoy your evening. Goodbye. All right, thank you. Do you want to, here you go, Dan.
That's why I put the microphone up there.
I appreciate that.
You're welcome, thank you, sir. It's cooler. I'm grateful for the coldness, thank you. Would you pass this to the clerk? These are the sign-up sheets, thank you. Okay, let's see here. Okay, we now have our regular meeting of the Richlands Town Council. I call this meeting to order at 7:35, okay?
May I make a motion?
Let me have the invocation, the pledge. Let's stand forth for the prayer, please. Not all prayer has to have a bowed head, but whatever you want to do, God knows our Heavenly Father, thank you again for the opportunity to be here tonight, to hear the people's voices, they're your people, and we're your people, we're all under your auspices, and we're under the wings of God, our Creator, or whoever your Creator is. We're appreciative of the springtime, it always lifts my heart with the flowers in bloom, and makes me feel good, and the fresh air that's coming, and I'm appreciative for all the people here around this council table, the manager, the town attorneys, the members of council, the clerks, and everyone in this audience. We are all grateful to be here. We hope and pray for your guidance, we pray that your will be done, in your name we pray, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. I do want to note, we have gone through, we're on item number, we've completed item three. We are at the particular junction in this meeting where I am noting, we've had time, we only have two members of council here, we do not have a quorum. In order to do the business of council, we must have a quorum. And so, I will defer to the town attorney for his legal guidance of where to go now.
Mr. Mayor of the town cannot conduct any substantive business without a quorum. You have noted the lack of a quorum, and that being the case, the only thing that you have an option to do is, under the Robert rules of order, you can adjourn to reconvene this meeting at a later date and time.
Okay, so to be clear, it is within my authority to adjourn and reconvene, is that what you say? At a later date and time?
Can I make a motion?
You may.
I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting, it can't be recessed. I make a motion that we end this meeting and adjourn it because adjourn it, we don't have a quorum.
There's a motion on the floor, is there a second?
Can we make a motion?
You made a motion, it's a power of a motion. There's a motion on the floor?
By Robert's rules, you cannot re-adjourn a meeting that you don't have a quorum, that you didn't have a meeting, so we can't have a meeting without a quorum.
Okay.
So, we have to adjourn a meeting, we can't recess it to another meeting.
Okay, now, go ahead, I would rely on the attorney, Doug.
I researched this today, my research indicates there are certain motions that are appropriate when you have a lack of quorum. One of those is to adjourn to a different date at this same meeting. You're required by the charter to have a regular monthly meeting, this meeting was properly noticed, and it's been properly called to order, but you cannot transact business, but you can adjourn to a different date, continuation of this regular meeting.
I was in contact with the parliamentary, parliamentarian in Virginia, and she says we can conduct no meeting, and it cannot be adjourned to another time, it has to be adjourned period. That was her ruling from Virginia, and I can get to that if you would like, but she said it was not proper under Robert's rules for you to do this. I give you my word, we were in contact with her.
I believe you, Doug. Do you have the name of this person?
I believe one of the citizens do. Do you have her name, Ms. Marla?
Marla.
The parliamentarian?
Yeah.
Okay, could you pull it up?
Ms. Marla, I would suggest you share this with the entire council, and particularly with the attorneys. I mean, I'm just, we were trying to make it right, so Bob, would you mind to look over this and see what you think? I don't understand, so I need some help.
Well, obviously the parliamentarian that you've spoken to, I haven't spoken to, and I don't know what she says, I don't know what's been presented to her, and I can't speak to that. My research indicates that this meeting can be adjourned to reconvene at a later time, and I think you have the authority to do that as mayor.
Okay.
You have the authority to call a meeting, this is a legally called and noticed meeting, you have a right to adjourn to a different time and different place, under Robert's rules and order, and under the charter of this town.
I appeal to the mayor to do the right thing, and by the rules, you cannot do that. You have, you have to adjourn this meeting, and you can't renew it at a different date.
Doug, I really appreciate your, your appeal to me to do the right thing, and sometimes you're not sure what the right thing is, because I have this and I have the attorney, so at this present time, I'm going to follow the attorney and do what I think the attorney, to repeat it, you're telling me that I'm taking your advice, your legal advice, that I have the right or the authority to...
Could you share that?
Did you say adjourn the meeting?
Before you make the ruling, could you listen to the parliament?
Well, I think Ms. Marla would have to come up if, I'll entertain that, but, sir?
Do you have a question?
No, she wants to present something, is that, what do you think? You want to read it or not?
Well, I've researched it, and I've got some authority on Robert's order regarding to my advice.
Okay, I'll go with the authority or the advice, the legal counsel, legal advice to the town of Richlands, to the mayor and to the council, that we adjourn this meeting and reconvene a continuity to a regular meeting on Tuesday, next Tuesday, the 19th, at 6:00 PM here in the Richlands Town Council chambers. Could you read that?
And what'd you want to do? Now, Doug, what was your motion? You went to it.
I want to adjourn the meeting.
Adjourn?
Yeah.
Adjourn the meeting, and then are we going to have another one or not?
The next scheduled meeting.
Let me make something clear about some of the reasons for it.
You cannot, you cannot carry on any business in a meeting if you don't have You cannot, you cannot carry on any business in a meeting if you don't have a quorum. If you read that, it's black and white, Robert's rules.
Uh, let me say something.
Paragraph.
You're correct. You cannot conduct any business without a quorum. That's why no business is going to be conducted tonight. But the meeting can be called to order and the meeting can be adjourned to a later time in order to attain a quorum so that the transaction of business can be done.
Is that what you want to do?
It says immediately. It doesn't say you can carry on anything. It says immediately you must be adjourned.
To be clear, will, will this constitute, will a meeting next Tuesday, before I go too far here, will it constitute a regularly scheduled meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So I have to go.
Could you speak on it, what you?
Uh, just a minute, please. Jeff is a member of council. Let him have his say.
Yeah, I was just trying to...
If you read that, it says immediately adjourned.
Okay. So the, so when do you want to meet again?
A regular meeting. What this is all about, if I could tell the audience, if they get this meeting, they're going to raise your taxes because they're going to count this, uh, next week as a first reading. They can get a second reading and they can raise your taxes while, uh, that's on this page. So it's a gimmick to screw you, okay?
If I could address that.
Uh, Bob?
You have to have a reading of any ordinance two times before a regular meeting. You're correct. However, even if it's not read this coming Tuesday, it can be read in the meeting in, in, uh, May and in June and enacted at that time. It's not a question. You have to have two readings at a regular scheduled meeting.
Okay. If you don't, if, what you're trying to do, if you can have a regular...
I'm not trying to do anything.
Well, you won't, well, I'm not going to go into it. But if you have a regular session next week, that will count as one session. Okay, then you're going to read it the following month and that'll be your two readings where that you can raise the taxes on these citizens.
Doug, I have a suggestion that I think will work to satisfy your concerns. Uh, first, I don't want to, I hope we're not thinking about screwing people. It's not a cool way to think of it.
Well, I'm sorry. They're going to raise your taxes. I apologize.
So the next thing, uh, I would ask the manager, uh, if on the readings of the, uh, of these ordinances, if we could continue and have a regular meeting, but not read the ordinances next week, that would alleviate, I would think, uh, the issue at hand. And we could schedule the first reading to be in May and the second reading to be in June.
I, I would not be happy with that decision.
Of course not.
No, 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 no. Please. We must have ordered here the manager. No. Everyone deserves respect. Everyone. And so, uh, we must have it. Thank you. That's, I, I've expressed myself. Thank you. John?
With the issues we've had with the budget in the past, the intent was to try to get it, you know, started as early as we could so that there were issues or things that needed to be changed that we would have time so we don't end up the very last week of June trying to get something changed and run into a, you know, timeline deadline with the state requirements, our charter requirements, you know, all those timelines, advertising, things of that nature. So the intent was to have the first reading this month so we could go ahead and have the ball rolling to have it, you know, approved in May. So if there was anything that needed to be changed or, um, different than what the original proposal was, that we would have adequate time to make those changes.
May I speak? Uh, I want to ask Jeff. Jeff, your thoughts, please.
I'm trying to understand the word.
Well, I'm...
Or what the two things, now we have two options?
Can I explain to Jeff?
Yeah, explain. That's, that's why I was just...
Okay, if we don't adjourn this meeting and have the regular meeting next month.
Okay.
They're trying to pull this, or if you agree to have a regular session meeting next week, they will be able to raise all these taxes. But if you go along with my motion and don't let them have a regular session next week, then they will not be able to get these taxes in for the new budget. And we can give these people some help on all these taxes that they're going to raise. So it's all up to you or the mayor, if he will disallow it or you will go along with having the regular meeting as we should.
Who's to me? But we have to conduct business this month, correct?
We need to get some...
We need to get April.
Well, we can conduct everything but, uh, but taxes.
I, I want to speak, please.
Well, those will be ordinances, so we're going to have to have two readings anyway.
Yeah, but they can't get them in. The only way they can get them in, that's why Mr. John O'Daniele's...
I don't, I don't want to get them in. I want to get them right.
Well...
You know, and I want to listen, because I, I've listened to them tonight.
Okay, you're going to get them wrong if you don't raise the taxes.
Well, no, I mean, I want to, I want to put my two cents in as far as my ideas for the budget. I echo a lot of what the people said. No.
All I'm saying is...
Cut till it helps.
All I'm saying, if you go along and Mr. Mayor doesn't stand up or you don't...
I don't think it's fair to put us in that situation because this is something, this is something new to everybody and like I said...
I'm trying to listen, pardon me.
If you're under...
Pardon me. I'm trying to listen to what our attorney's saying, to what you're saying, to what Jeff is saying. I'm hearing the citizens too. And, and John, I understand you want to get it done. But I think we do have an obligation to hear the people's voices and take it to heart, which you have, I'm sure. But the other members of council who are still on council have not had the opportunity. And I would hope that we could, uh, I'm not anxious to go all the way to June, but I think it might be the right thing to have, to have a meeting next week, but not include the reading of the ordinances and continue the business that we need to do. And we could move, I know how disappointing that is to you, but I mean, not, it's not a personal thing. You're trying to get the business of the town accomplished. Now I'm saying that very respectfully. But I think it might be wise to put the readings into May and June in order to, for all the councilmen to assimilate what's been said tonight. My suggestion. So Jeff, your thoughts?
I guess what I'm thinking first and foremost is, you know, regardless of what's going on tonight, or basically it's just sort of like me and Doug here, so we can't pass a budget.
We can't do any business.
And we need help, you know, in, in the wake of, we have the two resignations this month. So, you know, we need to work together to get...
To get those seats filled?
To get to, see, well, decide what we're going to do. I think we need to discuss, you know, if we're going to appoint them, if we're going to wait till the election, you know, because we have options.
That's a great idea. Why don't we have the regular meeting next month? And that'll give us time to get two council members on, just go to the regular session.
Either or.
And that'll give us time to get two more members where they can hear what's...
Can we do another, I, I'd like to do another budget workshop just to, you know, incorporate some of the stuff that we heard tonight so that we can work on, work on things.
I'm trying to find the, the, the happy point. Uh, not just happy, the right point for the people and for all the people involved in preparing the budget and the council people who have to read it and understand it. So, and listen to what the people want. And, uh, so I'm, I'm asking you, Doug, if we take, for next week, if we could just have the special call meeting, which I think we would have time to do, and just take out...
There's a problem with that.
Well, just a minute, please. My suggestion was just remove these ord, reading of the ordinances and get the business done that we have to.
For the whole month?
Yeah, just for this...
Well, if they have the regular meeting next week, all they'll do is, I'm sure the attorneys will come up that, uh, we'll have, we'll have a regular meeting to the next week.
No.
And try to get it in.
I think that implies something that is incorrect.
Well, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm just talking plain and what's going on. I know their one, their one issue is to get that tax passed. That's their one issue. And I don't think it should be passed. The only way we can stop it.
Mr. Ratliff, I represent all the council, you and all the other members of council. And I give legal advice. I'm not involved in policy. I don't set the taxes. I don't pass ordinances. I give legal advice when requested by the mayor or, or the council. I have no axe to grind in any of these policy issues which are in the purview of the council members. I try to give good legal advice based on the town's charter, its code, the state code, and other relevant documents. So any implication that I am scheming with anyone to raise anyone's taxes or any other policy matter is incorrect. I serve all the members of council as town attorney.
Could I speak on that?
I respect you and your great attorney, but you serve one person. That's John O'Daniele's. You've never helped me one bit. You've never represented the whole council.
That is accusatory. We need to be very, very careful.
It's true.
Uh, no, just, just a minute, please. I'm trying to, I think we can resolve this. I, I understand, but we haven't gotten to where we are. We can't do this until we see what we're doing with this meeting. So, just a minute, please. Thank you. I, I understand the sensitivity of it and how many wants to speak, but, uh, I believe we can resolve this. So again, my suggestion, and Doug, a special call meeting will not represent a regular meeting to get taxes paid, all these things we typically do.
Okay.
And, and just a minute. And we could remove from the agenda the reading of the ordinances and have them prepared for May, first reading and Jan. second. My thinking.
Okay, that would be fine if you move within that statement that they won't read these ordinances until the next regular meeting.
I did, we can't read it at a regular meeting. A special call meeting is not a regular meeting.
All they have to do is recess that meeting to the next week.
No. No. It's, no, it's not right, Doug. Uh, you've misunderstood.
You'll make this ruling and watch, you'll make this ruling and watch what happens.
I don't make the ruling. I can, he says, but I'm trying to be democratic and get input from you and Jeff.
If you're democratic, you would listen to the citizens. They don't want those taxes.
That's, we're talking about procedure right now, Doug.
Procedure means everything.
I think so. Uh, okay. Jeff, your thoughts?
My thoughts would be, we need to have a meeting, we need to have some type of meeting for April to conduct business.
Yes, just the regular business of the town. And the concern that is being expressed is over here under agenda items. Uh, it would be Roman numeral eighteen, particularly, uh, for the item E.
Sure. And I think, like I said...
What's out of main?
Yeah.
Right here, Doug.
The budget, yeah.
To the first reading in May at a regular meeting.
Is this what we're considering, the first reading of the ordinances?
Yes.
Now, do we have time?
Move this.
Because like I said, I, I think we need to make a whole bunch of changes.
I do too. Well...
So, I mean, it's going to be a moot point if we read them anyway.
Understanding what the council is driving at.
Mm-hmm.
I know it's disappointing, but it's the council's wishes. So, but I can't, I want someone, you made a motion, but I think it should be a different motion, uh, that we could just adjourn and then we could have a special call meeting next week where we conduct the business that is not reading of ordinances. Think about it.
Well, when we had a, if, if we have a quorum though at the next meeting, then we can just, we can make revisions to the agenda to eliminate the item, correct?
Yes, we could.
Only thing I'll look for is...
If, if we remove the ordinances, right, reading?
And not, and we agree to not read the ordinance to the next regular meeting.
Or whenever we, yeah, whenever you say.
No, I mean, all they're going to do is call a special meeting and then they'll recess that meeting to a regular session and then they'll pass those ordinances.
That's not, you can't do that, Doug. You think you can, but you can't.
Okay.
A special meeting does not give birth to a regular meeting.
They're very inventive, so we'll see.
Who's that?
Sir, I'd like to say something.
Just, just a minute, please. Just a minute, please. Everybody's wanting to talk and if I let that go, we'll all go crazy. I'm trying to think. Thank you very much for your understanding.
Rod?
I think the only simple thing, I make a motion that we, I have a regular meeting until the regular session in, was, at May?
May tenth.
May tenth. And if you remember, two months ago, we had a meeting, we didn't even agree to pay the bills, but they got paid. It wasn't even brought up in the minutes, if you look back. We just passed by them. And nobody even brought them up, if you look back. So it's not going to hurt us to wait till... I'm sure the bills will get paid without us. They always do.
There's other things we need to do. We'll have appointments, not just for council, other appointments that need to be made. But I think that we do have a special call meeting or a continuance of this meeting as long as we agree not to take a vote on it, not to have the first reading of these ordinances.
Until May tenth?
That's the big thing, isn't it?
Okay. I make a motion, we don't have these read until May tenth, ordinances.
Yeah, please.
Uh, let's reframe that motion. Counselor?
There is no, there's no quorum here. No business can be transacted here tonight as a result of a lack of quorum under Robert's rules of order. The only procedural steps could be taken in the absence of a quorum is the setting of a continued meeting through a motion to fix the time to which to adjourn, ending the meeting through a motion to adjourn, recessing the meeting in an effort to obtain a quorum, or taking measures to obtain a quorum such as rounding up members in the hall or contacting members. So you really can't set any substantive issues going forward here tonight. Those are the only options you have because you have no quorum.
You can adjourn it and call a special meeting next week. And that gives you time, Jeff. You're doing the right thing. You're on the right track.
Well, I did, I did, I didn't doubt that I was, okay? Thanks for pointing it out, though. I appreciate you letting me know.
Well...
I'm not ready to vote on this thing, okay?
It might be the simplest thing for us to just adjourn the meeting and we'll go with our special, is our special call meeting still in effect?
It's up to you all.
Well, it's on the webpage, I'm told, but hasn't been...
It's not right now.
It's not?
But it's up to you all.
Well, do you want to have a special call meeting so we can do the other business of council other than vote on, or reading of the ordinances? I'm looking to you for legal advice.
What, what's the question?
Can we have a special call meeting, Bob?
If you...
And go through everything on the agenda except for the reading of the ordinances? It's, uh, it's under Roman numeral eight. Uh, it says, I'll read it very fast. Discussion of a vacant council seat, idea update, all these things. Do you have it in front of you?
You have time. What do you get, three days, business days?
Yeah, you still be good. We get, if we advertise the night. If we advertise the night, should we go? Because Friday's on the hall.
I think we have time for that.
Just barely.
What's barely?
You have to, you have to have three, three business days.
Mr. Mayor?
And there's three.
You were asking me, can we have a special meeting?
Yes, or, yes.
A special meeting can be called pursuant to the terms of the charter. And you have to have notice provision in order to, uh, give the public notice that you're going to have this special meeting.
The special meeting has to be three members.
No, I can call.
The mayor can call a special meeting.
Pardon?
The mayor has the authority to call a special meeting.
Wouldn't be wise.
Well, it's okay. Uh, what, um, well, we've got two choices. I'm down to this in my head. If we continue this meeting and have a gentleman's agreement, we're not going to read the, uh, the ordinances, then we're risking what Doug is against, okay? He's afraid that won't happen. And so, uh, that would have to, because to amend the agenda, we would have to have the vote of the council that exists. I got it. And otherwise, to satisfy his request, we would adjourn this meeting and I will sign a petition for a special call meeting. And we have time to consider the ordinances before the first reading in May.
Yeah, I mean, that's essentially what we did a few years ago. We, we called the, the mayor called the special meeting every night, didn't we? In order to try to get the budget passed before July first or something, I thought.
We met on June the fifteenth because I had surgery that, no, June the fourteenth. That was the day after I had surgery. I remember that. Okay. So, uh, a vote of council, can we vote, Bob? Two members? No, we can't.
I think I've already advised you, Rod, what you could do, what you can't do.
I declare that with this meeting as adjourned, I will sign a petition for a se, a special call meeting of council uh, next Tuesday, on May the nineteenth, here in the council, April nineteenth, sorry, April nineteenth, here in the council chambers at six P.M. Set and done. Meeting is adjourned. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
So, there we have it.
He's pacing.